Well, thank you, thank you so much. And first and foremost, and most important, I want to thank everyone that's joined us today because we have an absolutely exciting program to roll out to you. My name is Kirk Thompson. I am your 2020 president of the Massachusetts Association of Realtors, and we have a wonderful panel here to give you some additional information on what's happening and also answer some of the questions you have. Next slide. Perfect. So here's our panelists with us today. We have our CEO. We also have Justin Davidson, General Counsel and Government Affairs Director, Catherine Taylor, our Associate Counsel, and Jonathan Schreiber, Legal and Regulatory Counsel. And now, and most importantly, it is my pleasure to introduce you to one of the smartest men I know. Dr. Lawrence Yun is the Chief Economist and Senior Vice President of Research at the National Association of Realtors. He oversees and is responsible for a wide range of research activities for the association, including NAR's existing home sales statistics, affordability index, and home buyers and sellers profile report. He regularly provides commentary on real estate market trends for its 1.4 million Realtors. Dr. Yun creates NAR's forecast and participates in many economic forecasting panels. Among them, the Blue Chip Council and the Wall Street Journal Forecasting Survey. He also participates in the Industry Economist's Discussion Group at the Joint Center for Housing Studies at Harvard University, right here in Massachusetts. He appears regularly on financial news outlets and is a frequent speaker at real estate conferences throughout the United States and has testified before Congress. Dr. Yun has also appeared as a guest on C-SPAN's Washington Journal. And with that, I give you Dr. Lawrence Yun.
Thank you, President Thompson. Can people hear me? So I want to make sure that people are able. Very good. So thank you, President Kirk Thompson, for the introduction. And first, I want to say that I have known Kirk for many years because he has volunteered his time at NAR Committee, certainly in the very important Strategic Planning Committee where I had a chance to interact many times. So very innovative thinking that he brings. I'm sure he is leading the charge in the state of Massachusetts. Everyone is interested about the market condition and what we can anticipate. First, this is unprecedented. You know, we have never seen anything like that economically. Also, just from Sosado perspective, just having a lockdown when the Spanish flu went through, I guess, back after the First World War, some 50 million people dying globally. Certainly, we do not want to have a repeat of that with coronavirus. So the lockdown is in place to assure that people come out healthy for the most part. I mean, it's very sad to see the number of, you know, bad cases that is occurring. But the economic lockdown is having a very negative impact to the broader economy. The housing sector had been extremely strong in 2019, the first couple of months, January, February, moving solidly for winter compared to other January and February data. First half of March was also decent, respectable. But then in the second half of March, and here in April, things are really coming apart. But it is temporary. It is a government-imposed shutdown. And many consumers, households, they want to be patriotic. So government-imposed shelter in place. They want to abide by that. Now, in some states like Pennsylvania, where real estate cannot be even viewed. So I even heard a Realtor almost got arrested by a police officer for visiting a home to just check it out, a vacant home, because no one can physically open the door in Pennsylvania or in Michigan. But in other states, as people respect social distancing and doing all the prep work through virtual tours, Realtors becoming very resourceful, they are able to show homes or visit just, you know, with a social distance, just one-on-one, and able to get the deals done. So even during this pandemic phase, there are far fewer listings, fewer buyers, but deals are still getting done. The key question is, when the economy reopens? Now, there are a lot of uncertainty, many unknowns. When will it open? What is the path of the virus? Will the vaccine be miraculously discovered in the summer, or is it going to be in 2021? A lot of uncertainty. But the government-imposed economic shutdown will lead to GDP declining something like 30% in the second quarter. Unheard-of negative number. We are already seeing in the unemployment insurance numbers. But we also have to think about, when the economy reopens, there will be a good deal of small businesses that have been held back, just coming back alive almost to full capacity right away. Barber shops, hair salon, daycare centers, dental offices, you would be pretty much back online immediately. So some of the job losses currently, that will be recovered quite quickly with people running full-time immediately. Other industries, like cruise ship industry, airline industry, it may take longer to recover. So some sectors, V-shaped recovery, others more like a U shape, meaning you go down, stay down for a while before recovering. So where does the real estate fit into this? Before the pandemic, we had a housing shortage because demand was just too strong, not enough inventory. During this current phase, we have many homes delisted, and we have even fewer inventory. But we don't sense a housing shortage because demand has also dropped off during the current period. Partly, people want to wait out until the pandemic phase is over before returning. And in fact, we have been taking surveys and we are finding that there is no panic among home sellers or would-be home sellers. Either they have already listed and they are keeping their home prices steady. They are not saying, oh, I have to cut my prices deeply in order to attract buyers. Home sellers are not doing that. They are just calm. And also, some home sellers are saying, I will not put my listing now, but once all clear signal is given, then I will post my inventory. So inventory will show up once the pandemic phase is over. Similar situation with the buyers. Buyers are saying, I'm going to just stay at home for a while. But once the economy reopens, then they will re-enter the housing market. Now, with the job losses quickly accumulating, you say, where are the buyers? Where would they come from? We have to remember, even in the worst-case scenario, 70% of employment would be considered fairly secure. I mean, you would never see unemployment rate of, say, 30%. So 70% of the employment would be considered very secure. And those people with secure employment would say, look at this mortgage rates. Wow, 3%. Or I think it could even go into the twos for briefly, you know, 2.8, 2.9%. And they want to take advantage of that situation. And also, maybe some buyers who got fed up with the multiple bidding before the pandemic, they may say, oh, with less buyer competition, maybe this is when I want to take a move. So I mentioned about the home sellers becoming very calm, not reducing prices, or would-be home sellers as they list. They're also not intending to reduce price from what they thought the market value was. And also, the buyers are also indicating that they would not be low-balling the offer. Maybe there's one or two cases where they will low-ball the offer, but broadly speaking, majority, 60%, but I think closer to 70% of the buyers are saying that when they make an offer on the home prices, they think it will be close to the pre-pandemic home prices, whatever that was, or that particular neighborhood. And if they were to offer a little lower, it would be less than 5%. Now, for any normal housing market, I mean, those are normal conditions. People bid maybe, you know, 95% of the listing price. So again, the buyers are not anticipating deep price discounts, nor the sellers remaining calm. In hands, through this cycle that we are undergoing, big GDP decline, big sales decline, pending contracts decline. Once it reopens, we will have a recovery. But one thing that will be steady is home prices. Home prices were solid before the pandemic. It looks like, once the economy reopens, home prices will be stable, relatively stable. Certainly, nothing like what we experienced back in 2008, 2009 recession. And we should not anticipate anything similar to that period because we have to look at the facts. There are many unknowns, but there are few facts. One of the facts is that back in '08, '09, subprime lending were widely prevalent. About one-third of home purchases were made with those funny mortgages, adjustable-rate mortgages, resetting, and also people overstretching their budget. So all the bad stuff regarding the buyers getting those easy mortgages. Today, we don't have that, or we didn't even have it last year. Very few minor special cases, say, you know, young couple, maybe they recently graduated from medical school, that don't meet the debt-to-income ratio, but you can see the huge income potential. So the mortgage lenders say, oh, you are outside of the credit box, but certainly a good client for borrowing mortgages. But those are just very few. We don't have that prevalent subprime mortgages. Another factual difference is that back in '08 and '09, home builders went wild. They overproduced by far large margin. I know I'm going to mention like million units and so forth, which does not mean so much. But historical average in the US, based on population growth, is that we need to build about 1.5 million new housing units each year. Home builders were building over 2 million for a few consecutive years, overproducing. And therefore, when the mortgages blew up, we had an oversupply. Oversupply led to the foreclosure prices and then all the damage from, you know, 30% reduction in price, 30% reduction in unit sales, terrible condition for real estate business. Today, you will not see price decline, as I sort of alluded to, because fundamentally different, and the buyers and sellers do not expect that. So that's one. Mortgage forbearance is also helping that. So people who face financial hardship just missed out on a few monthly payments. Those are not free lunch. It will be simply tacked on at the end of the life of the mortgage itself. So therefore, they will be paying. But during the pandemic period, at least it buys some time for people to just arrange their finances in the meantime. So we don't anticipate any foreclosure increases. Maybe there will be slight increase, but nothing drastic increase that we saw 10 years ago. But the other part is that the prospect for economic recovery. I mentioned about possibly 30% decline in GDP. Never seen anything like it off-the-chart numbers. When I say off-the-chart, when there is a deep recession, usually, economy would contract maybe 3% or 4%. So to contract 30% is just unheard of. But you will also begin to see unheard-of, off-the-chart positive numbers in the third and fourth quarters. Again, as the barber shop opens, dental offices opens, and GDP growth may be 20%. And my overall projection, at least for the housing sector, is that we are missing out on the critical spring buying season. It is called the spring buying season for the fact that there are many families with school-aged children wanting to make the move before the next school year begins. They do not want to make it in the middle of the year where some of the children may have difficulty adjusting to the new school and so forth. So many school-aged children, families, want to make the move before the new school year. If they cannot close the deal by July or August, there could be some families who will say, you know what? Why don't I wait until 2021? So it could be that we don't fully recover what is missed out in the spring buying season. So autumn and winter will certainly be strong from this delayed opening of the economy and much better than what it was last year, autumn and winter. But I don't think it will make up for the loss that we experienced during this spring buying season. So I think because of that, the unit sale for the year as a whole in 2020 could be down, say, something close to 10%. But the prices will be holding on. Interestingly, when I speak with large brokers, you know, whether it is Century 21, Cal Williams, RE/MAX, you name it, speak to them. I've been indicating, pre-pandemic, so say, January of this year, I say, how should you prepare for your business? And I generally say, we're using all the data to say, we have this huge pent-up demand for housing that is yet to be released into the marketplace. And therefore, if we have more inventory coming onto the market with more home construction, anticipate that four of the next five years should be an improving year for business, four of the five years. I rarely ever say five out of five years. I always want to give one year as an unexpected event. Unexpected event could be higher interest rates that Federal Reserve pursue, or maybe oil price shock, you know, going up to $100 per barrel or something like that. I would have never guessed that this virus is the one that is holding back the economic potential. So the whole year 2020, you know, deep decline in second quarter, followed by some big nice improvement in the third and fourth, but still unable to make up for those misactivity. So the GDP will be lower in 2020 year as a whole. You know, you go through that big down and up, maybe 3%, 4%, 5% down in the GDP, which will correlate to net job losses of maybe 3 to 5 million. But that is not the number that you see today in terms of unemployment filings. I think so far in the past four weeks, over 20 million unemployment numbers. So in other words, 20 million unemployment filings, more next week. But good portion of those people are filing, will find job later in the second half. So the net loss on the job will only be about 5 million for the year as a whole. Going into 2021 and beyond, again, stored-up housing demand. I don't have time to go into all the numbers as to why, you know, I firmly believe there's a strong stored-up housing demand. I mean, certainly, you dealt it in January and February and most of last year. But that will, you know, reach the marketplace and help out. I'm sure you are all aware that NAR work tirelessly to assure that Realtors, independent contractors, self-employed entrepreneurs can tap into unemployment insurance. Now, the state system, some, you know, their computer system was not designed for that. So it may take some time to get it ready, but the payment will be retroactive. So mark it down when the market turned negatively, and then as you file it, and once they approve, it will be retroactive. Federal government is providing that enhanced unemployment insurance, which means $600 per week. And Massachusetts will add on through their formula. So it's possible that people who are financially impacted may be receiving $900, $1,000 per week. I know many people are getting that stimulus check of $1,200 one-time payment this week. But that is relatively small amount versus the people who are impacted, receiving, say, $1,000 per week throughout the period, they are impacted. And also, for the broker owners, the Small Business Administration loans, which turns into grants if one follows a certain procedure, you know, that is available. Because the reason for the stimulus is that government is essentially saying, Americans were hardworking. Entrepreneurs all made the right decision. Economy was very fine. Yet, it was the government essentially imposing economic shutdown, and it is unfair that Americans should suffer through financially because government had ordered economic shutdown. So the spirit of this stimulus is that people should not suffer financially because of that. So good portion of the lost income, lost business activity should be made up through the unemployment insurance along with the Small Business Administration loan. A lot of details, a lot of bureaucracy, a lot of delays, but it will all be retroactive and be assured that you should tap into those resources. But of course, you know, Realtors are not interested in, you know, just getting the temporary relief. They want the business to be back up and going. But I think, you know, with the economy reopens, again, slowly, that housing demand will be appearing. I mentioned that 70% of jobs tend to be very secure. They will be facing low mortgage rates, enhance the stable prices, maybe some decline in unit sale this year. But '21, '22, you will be continuing upward path. In Massachusetts, the brain power, you know, all the universities in the state of Massachusetts, and consequently, you have so many technology jobs, medical technology jobs, and other areas. So within the New England state, it is Boston leading the charge. So when one looks at, say, Connecticut, or say Vermont, or Maine, the job growth tends to be more sluggish. But Massachusetts tends to outperform the national average because I think the brain power that is coming from the Boston region. So I think, once the economy reopens, I think the job growth in the Massachusetts should be, again, outpacing the national average. And maybe I will just stop there and just turn it back to President Thompson, and maybe I can answer a few questions.
All right, perfect. And thank you, Dr. Yun. That was a lot of very helpful information. We do have a couple of questions for you from some of our members that are listening today. One of the first ones was, what are some of the major changes for new and pre-construction resulting from the pandemic? Do you foresee higher prices on new construction units? And I'm assuming that that results from supply chain issues.
Oh, yes. So, you know, everything that is made has now so much global supply chain connections. And so if there is a disruption, naturally, you will raise the cost or delay in bringing. Today, housing starts number date came out, 1.2 million, which is a little below what it had been in the second half of 2019. But it's actually better than the first half of 2019. So even with a big decline, believe it or not, housing start is actually better than the first half of what it was in 2019. But the home builder economists are anticipating, at least in the next couple of months, there will be quite a disruption to the home building industry. Again, some states, they are saying, don't even do construction. You know, you are spreading the virus. But other places are saying, with social distancing and many of the construction crew, I mean, they are purposely getting the instruction on social distancing to say, look, we're working hard, we are far away, we're not doing anything that could lead to any health risks. But overall, again, they are ready to go. It's matter of, they have to overcome some of the supply chain disruptions.
All right, perfect. And the next one pertains to new construction versus existing construction. So Dr. Yun, you recently posted an infographic showing that home construction is trailing by about 1 million units annually, while the S&amp;P Dow and NASDAQ indexes are off about 11 to 19%, and the iShare home construction index is off by about 39%. Home builder confidence is falling. How far behind should we expect it to be? And is this positive for existing home sale prices?
So the fact that the home builders may face some difficulty in bringing new product online, meaning that housing shortage that we had will continue for a longer period. Now, some of the demand will not fully recover, but we had that housing shortage, especially at the mid-price and below. On the upper end, because of the limitation on the property tax deduction, I think many of you are aware of the state and local income tax limits on that. So the upper-end market had been somewhat soft, but very strong market activity in the mid-price and below. But it's also very difficult to build at that price points. But the housing shortage of the builders pulling back somewhat, at least, is implying that they were certainly not being oversupplied. I would encourage also that Realtors, when you have chance to talk with public officials, with the governors and others, when the economy reopens, to show that there is a pent-up demand. And the housing would be one big contributor to economic recovery late 2020 and going into 2021.
Excellent. And along the lines of the crystal ball question, Dr. Yun, when you are assuming, sorry, what are your assumptions regarding the opening of the economy? And how fast and when will it fully open in your modeling?
That one, if I knew. So there are a lot of unknowns, uncertainties. You know, people are coming up with, you know, a variety of potential antibodies, but it's really difficult to say. So whatever decline we experience, we are missing out on that economic activity. But once it reopens, we will begin to capture most of the lost output, but not fully, which is the reason why 2020 would be slightly negative. But I think 2021 and onwards, it should be very positive. In fact, it just occurred to me, New Orleans, when Hurricane Katrina hit New Orleans, unemployment rate went up from 5% to 15% essentially overnight. And it was such small business owners, travel industry, hotel, essentially shut out, and the unemployment rate quickly climbed. Disaster relief money came in, and it revived the economy such that New Orleans home prices actually rose the following year. I mean, there was some home destruction, so that it led to housing shortage. But one can make the analogy that today, we were already in an housing shortage. And therefore, with the massive size of fiscal stimulus nationwide, at least that will hold on to home prices. Another different angle on the argument of stable prices. One can look at the terrible 9/11 tragic events in New York. Similarly, the home prices actually rose in 2002 in New York because of massive stimulus money going into the New York region at that time. So one should not think that just because we had this unemployment rate that is anticipated to rise from very, very low level to maybe even 10%, it's not a permanent thing. It can quickly come down because we have a massive stimulus.
So great question. Along those lines with mortgage rates and liquidity, we've heard that there are some program changes or some infrastructure changes. Some question of whether it was happening at the GSE level, or whether it was just happening with local lenders that may be increasing the creditworthiness or the underwriting criteria for their borrowers. Have you seen anything in the national level or heard anything more about that?
JP Morgan went public. They said, we will accept 20% down payment minimum and 700 credit score minimum. That will wipe away a good portion of first-time buyers. But if one reads more carefully on what JP Morgan is saying, they are saying the following. First, the refinance demand is so strong, they don't have staffing, and therefore, they want to put a gate from, and one gate is to put high credit standards. JP Morgan should be hiring more people to handle processing, but they think that refinance is more by short-term situation. And then maybe, once refi situation is over, they could relax credit standards. But their second issue, which is mortgage forbearance. As part of the stimulus, some people can miss out on mortgage payments. And then in the process, JP Morgan still has to pay the property tax, homeowner insurance as a mortgage servicer, and pay the money to the mortgage investors. So they are getting cash squeezed. So I think they want to raise the attention for the regulator to say, look, if you don't fix this mortgage servicing issue, we have to drastically raise the credit and it could harm. So it could be some of a gameship among the banking industry. Certainly, NAR, I mean, we're not interested in helping the banks, but we are interested in helping the first-time buyers. So we have been telling the regulator to say, look, they're getting cash squeezed. And consequently, they may have to raise some of the mortgage standards, and that will harm first-time buyers. So we have been asking the regulator to say, maybe provide a short-term loan to the banking industry so that once people can start paying mortgages, then JP Morgan can pay back the government. So it's just a short-term loan, short-term fix, and quite an easy fix from my perspective. But there's a third component, which is JP Morgan, I think wrongly, is forecasting a potential large price decline. And they want to be extra conservative in terms of their financial business decision. But I think that's a wrong perspective outlook on the home prices. But I would also say that for mortgages that meet the Fannie-Friede standards or FHA, people, there are still mortgages at 3% down payment, 3.5% down payment. But maybe not for the jumbos. For the jumbos, you can no longer get a 3% down payment because it's outside of the Fannie and Freddie. But ones that can be backed by Fannie and Freddie, the mortgages are still there. So when some clients talk to the Realtors to say, I heard there's 20% minimum down payment. Am I out of the market? And you have to provide a correct information to know they are lower down payment products, still operating. Only the jumbo market or outside of the credit box situation is where things are more difficult.
This might be a good dovetail into that as well for the jumbo market and some of our higher-priced markets. Many of the Realtors on the call today are from the Cape and Islands and out in the Berkshire area, where they're heavily influenced by a second home market. Any indication how that might be impacted by what we're seeing right now with COVID-19?
Yeah, I think this is where the Federal Reserve, they went all-in to provide the liquidity. And I think in the speed of that decision, they overlooked few issues, including mortgage servicer. So I think they began to fix some of the issues they overlooked and make, begin to make fixes on this. So steadily, I think the mortgage that is outside of the conformant, meaning jumbo mortgages, mortgages for second home, mortgages for second home, I think that should be steadily become more liquid. Because again, the intent of the government, both Congress, White House, Federal Reserve, working independently is to say, this economic downturn is not the fault of Americans or fault of some economic cycle. It is government just said, we are shutting it down for a while. And consequently, they are doing everything possible. Once the economy reopens, there's no major hiccup or if there's some issue, they need to be addressed. They are constantly in communication with NAR and asking, you know, what are some issues that could hinder recovery? So we are relaying that information. But of course, I get that information from Realtor members, the Massachusetts Realtors. And I'll talk to Teresa, the CEO or President Thompson, and that information will flow to NAR and we will be relaying that information over to government officials.
Absolutely. And thank you so much. I really appreciate it, Dr. Yun. We want to make sure that we value your time as well. And our members are just so grateful that you could be here with us today and provide us that insight as to where things are going.
It's difficult time, but just hang in there. You know, market will recover. And thank you for having me. Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you so much. Perfect. So we were very excited to have Dr. Yun on. And again, some great information that he shared with us in terms of where the market was going. Thank you, sir. And just very, very optimistic. I love that. So possibly only about 10% down in volume or only maybe a decline of about 5% in pricing, if that. And still very stable out there, which is really good outlook. The interesting thing is here in Massachusetts, we've been seeing very similar things as well. Even though we've only looked at the pending home sales for March, most of that data looked relatively stable. So we're going to be looking at the closing home sale in about another week. And we'll hopefully have that opportunity to talk to you about what's happening right here in the real estate market in Massachusetts on one of our next calls. With that, I would like to kick it over to our incredible team at MAR for some updates and some additional information on PUA and some of the other stimulus that's coming out right now.
Hi, yes. So this was a question in the box of a few times. So let's talk about Lawrence mentioned the pandemic unemployment assistance and that it's delivered through the states and that many states did not have software systems ready and available for 1099 employees and gig workers. Massachusetts is indeed one of those states. The governor has engaged with the software vendor and they are hoping to launch by April 30th, maybe sooner. So very good news about that. Get your documentation together. Get your 1099s together, your previous tax returns. Have all that information ready to go. The second that the application is open, we will indeed share that information with you. And as Lawrence said, Dr. Yun said, it does go back retroactively. So more to come on that. Today, the governor during his address did mention the work that's going on and that in the next few coming days, there'll be some more updates related to it. So we will definitely keep you posted. MAR is aggressively working on this issue for our members. We know it's really important.
Perfect. And I believe there it is, direct stimulus. Everyone, I heard yesterday that we had about 80,000 taxpayers that had received their checks deposited directly into their account, but I know that many members may not have yet. What have we heard and what can we expect on that? And what's it looking like?
So if you did have your direct deposit information with the IRS, they did start with the payments. The checks are going to be about three weeks out from what we're hearing. If you are in a situation where you didn't file taxes in 2018 or 19, that for some reason you were a family member or friend weren't working or weren't connected to the IRS in some way, shape or form. The IRS does have a link on their website so that you can enter in your social security number, your address information, et cetera, to get into their database and see if you qualify for those payments. So just keep us posted. We've been really happy to hear our members share the positive results so that we can let our other members know that these programs are there and they are finally starting to get into the public.
Perfect. And we are also going to, we'll be going into our Q and A in a little bit. But first of all, we just want to make sure that we remind everyone that your one-stop shop for finding out, oh, no, it's okay, that slide's perfect, that that one-stop shop for getting all of the information you need is www.marcovid19.com. That's where we're posting all the information when it comes in. Updates, you can click right here to view the latest updates. We've got a bright yellow bar right there to call attention to. And also all of these videos, and I'm going to be telling you about who's coming up next too. All of these videos will be recorded there as well so that you'll have opportunity to access them, go back and listen as well. Also, just a reminder that for the MASC government site, you can go to www.masc.gov forward slash info details forward slash covid19, updates and information. And that's all the information coming out from the state. And then again, for the National Association of Realtors, that's at nar.realtor forward slash coronavirus. So before we get into Q and A and the rest of this hour, we're going to be taking your questions and answering any information that you need about what's going on in your businesses, your area, the market or here in the state of Massachusetts. We're also going to take any of the questions that we have. We'll try to get some additional information from Dr. Yun if we didn't have the opportunity to get your question answered earlier. And then we will answer anything else you have. So next week, let's talk about who we have coming up next week because I'm very excited about this. And I was thrilled that we were able to get Dr. Yun on the line as well for our Realtors today. So next week, on April 23rd at 2:00 PM, we are going to have Bob Goldberg, the CEO for the National Association of Realtors with us. And we're also going to have Vince Malta, the 2020 president of the National Association of Realtors. And they're going to spend some time with us talking to the Realtors in Massachusetts about what they're seeing at the national level, a lot of what they're doing to advocate on behalf of our members to make sure that you have the programming and the support that you need going through this challenging time. And we'll also be available to answer a few questions as well, which will be fantastic. And then after that, do we have anyone coming up after next week? Yes, we do. We have my good friend Lee Brown, who is an incredible trainer throughout the country, who is going to be here with you for a three-part educational series on what you need to know in terms of getting your business tooled up right now and also potentially retooling it to get ready for when we reopen and we get back out there, servicing our buyer and sell our clients a little bit later on this year. So she's going to be here with us on April 30th. On May 7th, we're going to take a one-week pause just because we have a lot of stuff going on with meetings at the mid-year virtual conference with NAR. And then she'll be back with us again on May 21st. So with that, we have a number of questions that have come up in the box. So let's go back and see if we can kick some of those over. Justin, I'm going to kick it over and see if you saw anything that raised to your level as well as of something we should grab. And
Thank you, President Kurt. Yeah, we have a couple of questions that have come in. We'll kick the first one over to Catherine. It's about vacation leases in place for June, July and August. Are those still okay right now?
Yes, those leases are still in effect right now. And any cancellations that people are looking to do for those rentals that fall outside of the current May 4th deadline, you need to look to the contract language for what the cancellation policy is.
And if you are signing leases for vacations in, over the summer, any recommendation, can you talk about the addendum that MAR put out for short-term rentals?
Yeah, absolutely. So if you haven't seen it yet, we have a new short-term rental COVID-19 cancellation addendum that we recommend, including with any new leases that you are signing for rentals that are taking place later in the summer this year. And that's just going to provide information to both the homeowner and the renter as far as what will happen to any deposits that are given. It's, it's calling for the deposits to be held in escrow so that in the event they do need to be returned, they're easily accessible. And then if they do have to cancel, if there is an extension on travel restrictions or short-term rental restrictions, those funds would either be returned to the tenant or applied towards a future rental as mutually agreed by the parties.
Thank you. Also, one for Johnny Schreiber here. Can someone clarify whether we can receive PPP loans and collect unemployment? I know we're facing an ever-changing guidance from the federal government, but can you comment on that? Johnny, did we lose you?
We may have. I think he may have dropped.
Okay. So the answer there is that, as I mentioned, the federal government is still updating its guidance as we go. I think it was just yesterday morning that they're starting to say that the PPP loan might impact your eligibility for PUA and how that offsets is still to come. So pay attention for more updates from NAR on that. There's also some questions about the PPP and the SBA, sorry, and the EIDL running out of money. NAR is actively and aggressively advocating for more money to come into those programs.
And along those lines, I see one that says, when will Realtors in Massachusetts be able to apply for unemployment? I know you covered that a little bit in the PUA one, Teresa. But I figure we'll reiterate that that is April 30th that we're expecting some guidelines to come back down. And we will definitely be updating you and the website as soon as we have that information and those guidelines.
And here's another unemployment question. Is it true that you had to make contributions to the unemployment system? That would fall under the traditional system, under traditional unemployment. Your employer makes contributions to the unemployment insurance system. This is a new program, which is one of the reasons why it's taking Massachusetts a little time to get it up and running. But it is funded by the federal government and you do not need to have made prior contributions to the system in order to receive benefits.
Okay, this is a good one too. We had a Zoom sale meeting this, this morning and the conversation was about the SBA running out of funds and self-employed only qualifying for 1,000 per employee. Do we have any updated information on that or availability of PPPF funds? Okay. And I, just to answer your question, I did receive an email earlier today indicating that the SBA may have potentially run out of funds around 3:00 AM this morning. So we're going to verify that information to make sure that's accurate. And then we'll get an update out to the website just to follow up on that as well.
So I'll just, I'll share as well. There is a limitation to 1,000 per employee for those emergency grants of up to $10,000. So that does impact independent contractors because your employee count most likely will be one. So you'd be eligible for 1,000, not 10,000. NAR is very aggressively on top of that issue. We talked about it for quite a long time earlier this week. So hopefully we'll have some more updates, even though the, the federal government isn't in session right now. They are still working together to get more funding for all of these programs. So we will keep you posted the second we hear anything up further.
Catherine, here's the one that's come up a few times. Anything new regarding liability waivers? So I think what they're referring to here is, you know, somebody looking at a house with waves all liability. Any updates there?
Yeah, yeah, no. You know, at this point, we don't have any plans to develop one on the MAR level. We've talked to national about this as well. And there doesn't seem to be a high level of exposure. Proving causation in these situations would be very difficult. So there's, there's no plan at this point for MAR to develop one. If you are presented a liability waiver of some sort, we would recommend having it reviewed by an attorney before you sign anything.
And thank you, Jim, for your question. Jim asks, what are your thoughts on how this emergency will affect our membership numbers? I'll take this one if that's okay. The, the easy answer is we're not sure yet, but we know we're going to be evaluating it as we head into the June, July period. What I believe we're going to see, and this is just one of the things I think we're blessed within our industry, even though many Realtors now need to work from home and are working remotely, they're still able to do a lot of what they do as Realtors and are setting up for business later in the year when we're able to come back in and some practitioners are still working. The other thing is that real estate has always been a very strong business option for people coming into second careers or re-entering the market. And we're in one of those stages where we may have a lot of people that may be seeking out real estate as a potential employment alternative. So even though we may see some members that need to make some decisions to do other things, we may see new members coming back in. So I think we're going to, we need to wait until a little bit later in the year to kind of see what the impact is. But overall, we're not seeing a significant movement one way or the other with membership numbers.
Okay. A lot of, yeah, I was gonna say a lot of specific questions about am I eligible for this program, program or that program or how does this work? Really recommend that you reach out to your accountant and walk them through your different business models. They'll be able to give you a much better analysis than, than we can through a question and answer format.
Correct, because some of the programs might have an impact on your tax filings a year or two from now. So you definitely want to check out with a professional. Make sure you know what's the best option for you and the way your, your business is structured.
So another good question from Mark, it says, does M-NAR, I'm not sure if this was NAR or MAR. See, this is a potential multi-dip shutdown. And if so, how would that affect what Dr. Yun is mentioning? I'm assuming in terms of the opening, whether we'll reopen and come back in. We'll see if we get some additional information. That would be a great question for us to put up next week with our two speakers from NAR and we'll keep that on our horizon as well.
There's a question here about the MAR smoke detector addendum. Just a reminder that that is not a mandatory form. That is voluntary. If the parties want to agree to extend that, defer that inspection out until after the closing, they are free to do so based on the executive order from the governor. We recommend using our form to do so. It was developed in conjunction with the Department of Fire Safety. But if there is pushback, it's, it's not required.
So Justin, if I could just supplement on that, we did circle back with the Fire Prevention Association of Massachusetts just the other day, and they have given us the blessing to go ahead and publish the database list that we've collected of local fire services. We had about 100 complete our survey and give the information as to whether or not they're doing inspections and how to communicate and send those addendums to them so that they can prepare for their workload the 90 days after the state of emergency is lifted. So those will be posted to our MAR COVID-19 site tomorrow.
One more question on the short-term rentals. On a short-term rental escrow accounts, are there regulations in place regarding a tenant not being able to take residency in their state till, has, sorry, residents in their state still has a, to stay at home in place? And if the tenant arrives and is quarantined for the duration of the stay? So I think that that probably pertains to what happens if somebody can't come in because they're quarantined in their state or if they're in place. I'm going to kick that one over to the legal team.
Come on, Kurt, you don't want to give it a try? Justin, I'll handle this unless you want to take it.
All yours.
All right. All right. So this has been, you know, sort of one of those million-dollar questions that we've been getting lately. You know, and you really have to look at the circumstances of why the tenants unable to come and fulfill their obligations under the lease. If it's a government regulation that there's a restriction that they cannot travel, that's legally prohibited, likely they would be excused from performance under the contract. You know, and that's particularly, that highlights the reason why we created that addendum as well for those new leases that would cover situations like that. If you don't have that addendum, it was at least previously executed or you didn't use our addendum, you're going to have to fall back on, you know, the common law principles of impossibility and look to whether it was a choice or whether they were it was a choice or whether they were prevented by circumstances beyond their control. If it's beyond their control, then they're likely entitled to a refund of any deposits they've provided.
Excellent. I'm going to grab this one. It says, will MAR update the standard purchase and sales agreement form available through zip forms, shifting smoke requirements to buyers? I am pretty comfortable saying no on this one. This is a short-term fix with the, the deferral form by mutual agreement of buyer and sellers to get us specifically through this time period. It really is a seller responsibility to, to test the smoke equipment and to show that it is in compliance with the current requirements prior to transferring title. And I know that we'll be returning to that within 90 days of the lifting of the state of emergency. Anything else from the legal team on that one? Good. Nailed it. Okay. See. And then there was just a follow-up note that G-Bar had updated their standard PNS, but no, we are not doing that at this, at the state level on our forms. A lot of questions on the short-term rentals and forms.
I'm seeing a lot of questions about not being able to find the forms. With our different forums platforms, there's different rollout times. So I believe all three are available in dot loop at this point. And zip forms, we might have a delay with simplicity, but they are all coming. You can find them all on COVID, MAR COVID-19.com.
And the next question, this is a question we've had from members as well. And Teresa, I'll get you in on this one also. While real estate is deemed essential by the governor, many towns are now not allowing showings. Is MAR able to help to have one place to see where we can and can't do showings? And that does go to the critical questions of whether you can or can't do showings. Teresa, what have you been seeing on that?
So Justin, you know what? I'm just gonna, I'll just say this. MAR is not going to be doing that, but we are assisting the local associations because those are, those are where those relationships are within the municipalities, within the local association's territories. We try to stay in our lane at the state level and the regulatory issues that affect everybody across the Commonwealth. Though Justin and his team has penned a few letters explaining the governor's order, articulating that we are essential services and there's been success with local presidents and association executives reaching out to those municipalities and providing clarification. Justin, do you want to add any additional to that? No? Okay. The other thing is, no, at this point in time, we are not going to publish any information like that to the public because again, our relationships are strong at the state level. We're not in every single community our local associations are. So our local associations should be sharing that information to the members that are in those territories. And, you know, if something changes, we don't want to have inappropriate misinformation on our public sites.
Absolutely. And another question we had was, what if a tenant becomes sick in a rental and cannot leave? And another tenant is due to come in? I will kick this one to the legal team momentarily, but we understand that there's going to be a lot of landlord tenant issues that arise because of the different requirements coming in. And the best consultant for that would be the person that may be helping to sort out that legal dilemma. That's going to be assisting the landlord in that. With that, I'll kick it over to the legal team for the official MAR answer.
Take it away, Catherine.
All right. So if you're using the MAR short-term lease, which is of course the only contract we can comment on, there is language in there that provides that if the landlord's unable to provide occupancy to the new tenant for whatever reason, which certainly this situation would be included under that, they have to provide the subsequent tenant a prorated amount of rent until they're able to provide that tenancy. So if they can't provide anything to the second tenant, that tenant would be due a full refund. If they were able to provide a partial tenancy, then they would have to prorate that rent. But otherwise, look at your contract if you're not using the MAR one.
Perfect.
If we could take one, this is not related to COVID, but it's something Catherine has worked on. Can MAR work with zip form to add a check mark to complete the lead paint disclosure properly? Presently, we can only add an X, which I found out in class yesterday. It is not allowed.
Yes. So we actually have spoken with counsel over at Department of Public Health regarding that. And they said that it is acceptable within our platform to use a check or an X. But to be sure that you're using a checker and X where it says to use a checker and X and not doing a checker and X where there's supposed to be initials, still have to initial where it says initial.
And there's a question, is there a department in each town we should check with prior to showing? Town health inspector, question mark. I personally don't think they're going to know necessarily unless there was something issued by the mayor or the, the government of that local town. I would definitely stay cognizant and most importantly, check with your local Realtor president and check with your local CEO to see if they've heard of anything. And your local resources are really the ones that can help at this time on those types of questions. Thanks.
I think we've hit most of the questions and we're coming up on an hour. Kurt, any final thoughts?
No. So basically, yeah, let's, let's definitely do final thoughts. First and most importantly, to all of our members out there, please stay safe and make sure that you're operating within good health standard guidance if you're going into the field to service buyer and seller clients. Second, please do continue to provide your, your questions either to us directly through the MAR COVID-19 site or even better, through your local Realtor president and your local CEO so that they know what's happening in the local market. And we are having those conversations every Monday to make sure that we're getting good information and bringing it back to you. Our goal is to keep you informed on what's happening within the Commonwealth and what impacts your business. And we really are trying to move forward in the next coming weeks to bring you good information so that as we are restarting the economy here in Massachusetts through the real estate market, that you have the tools, techniques and tips that you need to be able to come out of this and really thrive, not just survive the COVID-19 issues, but actually thrive as you come back out in terms of your real estate practices and businesses. I really do appreciate all those that are here with us today. Again, know that we have leadership coming in from NAR next week and then the fabulous Lee Brown for three weeks after that. Teresa, I'll kick it over to you and your team for final thoughts.
Just, just, I wanted to share that we are here to help. We're here for you during this time. And we're looking forward to seeing you after this time in person. It's been really hard to see faces on, on other ends of Zoom calls and miss being able to give a handshake and, and good wishes. So we're thinking of you and we can't wait to see you in person coming forward. If you haven't ever attended a National Association of Realtors legislative meeting in Washington DC, this year they are being handled virtually. So I will share tons of information about it, but they're really, the programming is phenomenal. So anything that you can participate in, learn a little bit more about the three ways that our organization works together in the advocacy arena, it would be awesome. So I hope you'll join us for that. And if you need anything, don't hesitate to ask us. If you're having a sales meeting and you'd like somebody from MAR to participate, we are more than happy to do that as well.
Absolutely. Justin or Catherine?
No, you guys nailed it.
One other thing I will put out there is as we're putting together even better technology platforms in the coming days, weeks and months, we may be reaching out to you, our members, to seek your input. We are very much looking to connect and engage it with our members and really know what your needs are and how you want to be communicated with at a level that we've never done before. So if you see those emails requesting for your input, I highly encourage you, please do give your input. It's not just a form that's going into a file. We really want to hear what you're thinking. We really want to hear your opinion on things. And with that, again, please reach out to us with any questions or needs as we should be reaching out to our local presidents and CEOs. And thank you for being here for the virtual town hall. We look forward to seeing you next week.